I want to welcome you all to our March Supervisors Meeting. And I'll call the meeting to work this time. Now, I'm going to read a statement. "Since our last meeting, we lost a local resident on a U.S. Marine squadron. May the minutes reflect that this board momentarily paused our meeting to acknowledge, pay respect, and homage to the late Clay Whiteman. Clay grew up in our township. He attended Breckton Elementary and Garden Spot High School. He honorably served our country as a U.S. Marine. Deceased at age thirty. We must do more to help those who are so willing to put themselves in harm's way for their country, yet struggle to adapt and return to civilian life. May we learn to listen more before we speak, encourage unity and common ground instead of conflict and spreading of the country person. I ask each of you in your own private time or style to petition our Creator for mercy and a blessing on the Whiteman family during this time." Thank you. At this time, I'll invite you to join the boards. We pledge the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. At this time, we'll have the roll call.
Terry Long.
Here.
Arthur Zerbi.
Here.
David Lineback.
Here.
Michael Reiner.
Here.
Elizabeth McGovern.
Here.
Tara Martin.
Okay. This time, our community open session. I limit it to four minutes each person. And I'd like to tell you, we have a busy schedule. Uh, we have a speaker from the Pennsylvania State Police, and I will allow public comments or questions after his presentation. Also, we have a rezoning, and I'll allow public comment here prior to that. So, this would basically be if you have something you want to talk about that's on the agenda. It's be your time. Like I said, I limit it to four minutes, and give everyone a chance. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? Yes, state your name and then...
My name is Lawrence Martin. I'm here on behalf of the School Board of the Troisdale Hill, curricular school located on East Bowensville Road. Several months ago, the road crew replaced the pedestrian signs along East Bowensville Road with more school-specific signs cautioning vehicles that they are approaching the school zone and to be aware of children crossing the road. The Troisdale Hill School Board wishes to thank the Board of Supervisors and the road crew for making East Bowensville Road safer for our children to travel on the way to and from school. Thank you. Thanks to the county and the crew."
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone else? Okay. Or anything you want to add? At this time, we'll invite our guests. Our first one will be a representative from the, yes, Pennsylvania State Police.
You guys have a full agenda for what I told... My name's Todd McCurry. I'm a corporal with the Pennsylvania State Police at Langston Barracks. My role there is I supervise all of the detectives that work out of the barracks and services area. Before I get into this report, which is pretty brief, to touch on what Mr. Martin said regarding the school signs, another point that I don't know if it raised at meetings like this, but we always bring it up at other township meetings, is if you do have any kind of traffic issue, if there's an issue at a road like that, the signs are great, but if you feel like a state police car sitting in the area and doing some enforcement would be something beneficial to end road in the township, by all means, you call down. We generate a number, we send some people, do some targeted enforcement. Sometimes, a lot of times, the road crews and stuff, if they set signs, then we can set a car out for the first couple of weeks, kind of as a warning, and do some enforcement for it. Kind of just let everybody know, hey, signs here, we need business. So, um, as far as activity for the month of February, which the report was even though everything prior to me, uh, the good thing for you guys, my focus is criminal investigation, felony crimes, burglaries, thefts. I can talk more about that than I can traffic stuff. That's not my, my area expertise, but the good news for what I'm seeing in this report is there hasn't been a, a lot of activity up there. And, uh, if you take Weaver Store out and the retail thefts, if they keep us busy with here and there, which is the same for any busy store like that, it limits the reporting even more as far as crime goes. I see one burglary or attempted burglary reported February 22nd. That's outstanding. That's great. So, crime-wise, this report doesn't, doesn't raise any red flags to me. By all means, if anybody has looked at this and had any questions, feel free to ask me. I worked as a trooper in our detective unit at the effort of barracks covering this township. When they closed that, I moved out to Lancaster, worked as a trooper, as a detective covering this township. So, I've worked in and around this township for the last eight years or so. And then my supervisor and I supervised the unit covering this area. So, if anybody has any questions for me that I can answer, feel free. And if anybody has any questions to the report, by all means, ask me.
Any questions from the audience? The concern we hear is response time.
Sure.
There is something. And we've had a couple of incidents, and it has taken a half an hour. It seems like a half an hour is typical. Would you, do you consider that typical, or can, um, can you comment on what you can expect?
I can comment that the, the calls are prioritized on a triage basis. So, if you're calling for an emergency call to service, it's not going to be thirty minutes. Our troopers, typical emergency code, code one response time to an assault in progress, a domestic in progress, is usually between five to fifteen minutes, depending on where they are geographically. And it's, obviously, all police officers are limited by where they are at the time the call comes in. But our guys have a pretty quick response time to those emergency calls. Do your typical calls for service, which we call code three, it's if you have a, somebody stole, essentially, the dispatcher's going to ask you if you had an emergency. If you say no, you wake up, someone stole from your car the night before, or your alarm is going off, then, then, then response time of a half an hour is, is not necessarily that ordinary. But that's based on the triage nature of how we're... Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I've also been told, and you can spout on this, that if there is a, a emergency, like the fire companies or the ambulances are called out, if you can't respond quick enough, can you, can you call the joining township police force and have them cover for you?
If it's something that would warrant that response, and we're not in the area, we do kind of have to do it now. So, um, I can't think off the top of my head, in this township, a lot of incidents like that that have occurred, but I know the Lisbon Township, it's tough for us to reach sometimes. They have an order regional, which, if it's a, if it's something we say, you know, we, we think an officer should be there quicker than we are, we're on our way, they can come, make sure that everything, everybody's safe, and there's no danger until we arrive. We, we do operate under that principle.
Well, I think the concern we hear is the first responders, fire company, respond to an accident.
Sure.
And they might be waiting ten, fifteen minutes until a trooper arrives.
One of the issues with crashes and accidents that that would make sense for me on is that if there's an accident with no injuries, we're going to slow our response. And essentially, that's, we're usually traveling a little bit greater distance, and anytime we're driving, emergency lights and sirens, that's a dangerous proposition. So, if, if no, if there is no immediate, if there's no injury or death or serious road crew, we are going to slow our response to something like that. Whereas, your responders are going to be a little bit closer, they're going to get there first. I mean, even when I was in patrol, I was rarely would I be in an ambulance or a fire department, but they're more localized than we are sometimes. So, and that's, that's why we, I would slow a response to something like that. And they, I mean, we're, we're trained, and I'm sure local officers are trained, you can't do any good if you don't get there. And emergency driving is a, is a dangerous business. But if that, that's the answer, though. I mean, if it's, if it's a, if we could be of immediate assistance, we need to get there fast if we can get there, but if it's putting back it down based on human safety, that's what, that's what we're doing.
Now, I'm aware, recent business in the area has, has had a number of false alarm burglary. The alarm goes off, and you guys respond. There's been a wind blowing door open, this and that. How many times do you do that? Do you, um, I don't know, do you expect five times?
Five.
And then you...
Citation.
You issue a citation to the business owner.
Correct.
In what period of time? Yeah, in five and...
I believe it's, I believe it's course of twelve months, but I have to...
Okay.
I'd have to check. If I was doing that, I think it's twelve months and three cents. So, we actually have a supervisor at our barracks that's responsible for all the alarms and lights encountered, and the people on them. And there are, there's only a handful of problem alarms in our county, but, but yeah, should it come to that, then we issue a citation, which is a non-traffic, which you go for it, just for us.
Sure. I'm surprised there's no more questions from the gang here. There, there you go.
I have a question for you. I know you said traffic control really isn't your expertise, but in the, in the light of traffic control, do they have a set schedule when they go out to like our area, meaning Bowensville and/or, uh, our township? And, uh, for, uh, looking for speeders and things like that, is that a scheduled time, or is it just when you have somebody available?
Well, there's always a, a car assigned to this township.
Is it always just this township, or is it multiple?
Sometimes, it can be multiple. So, that car, basically, the course of your shift, you're at the mercy of your call volume. Some guys are heavily, you know, that's what they're interested in, is traffic enforcement, and they will enforce it as they see fit. But we also have targeted enforcement times, which, like I said, if you have an area that you determine is a problem area, and you call that into the barracks and say, we think we need more coverage on 897 coming into Borough, people are speeding, then, then we can set up some more detailed enforcement times, allow a couple of guys to come out and take a look at that.
Who is it best to call in? The township, or the residents, or both?
Uh, in my experience, uh, I don't, it wouldn't hurt for a resident. We've had residents call in. When I was in patrol, now, we're going back about ten years, but I mean, I did the job on the road in uniform. We, we've had residents come in and say, hey, I live next to a stop sign, you know, feel free to sit in my driveway and do some enforcement. That goes on the board the same way as the township goes, our, our traffic enforcement board. We don't, ah, he's just a citizen, and no, we, we handle it the same. It all goes on the same information sheet. So, feel free, as a resident, to call if you have a problem area.
Well, I, I have, and, and I appreciate the, uh, your, your, your concern, everything with our township, but at times, your presence is good, but also, hey, stopped residence is better.
Explain what you mean.
Okay. Then, in other words, I live on Ash Town Road, and a lot of construction vehicles, they are flying down. They're working on that one. But if they see you in the township, they're most likely not looking to stop. But if you're stopped, and you are observing that traffic, you'll see it more.
Substantial stationary control.
Correct.
Yeah, but, and by all means, that's what we would, we would do, or could do. If it was a problem area like that, and I was checking the traffic board, that's what we would do. That's what I would do. All right, there's a problem on Ash Town Road, speeders, I'm going to find a visible spot to sit.
Do you only consider a problem area if you get multiple complaints, or...
Well, there's certain areas that we're at the mercy because it's such a big county, we have a lot of coverage area, that we're not, you, you guys are going to know better than us. But there's also areas that we, I mean, we know some of our problem areas, but when you get back into some of the, the nooks and crannies of the townships we cover, the citizens that live here know better than us. And that's why we, you know, we appreciate the information, because there's, there's plenty of, I mean, some of the young drivers out there know where the bumps in the road are, they want to drive over, we might not know where, but by all means, a team of armed officers would get out there and check it out.
Sure. I thought you were sure.
Thank you.
You have, yeah, go ahead.
From the fire companies, from the view, I mean, we're not complaining about your response time. There has been times where I agree, Jerry, it has taken twenty minutes, and it probably isn't the, the biggest deal. Uh, I remember at least two times, we've had troopers come off the turnpike. If the crash has special circumstances...
Right.
Uh, they will call them off the turnpike for us. Um, the part that looks bad to the fire companies, here we have this road shut down, we're waiting twenty minutes for you, we can't call the wrecker, that's your job.
I understand.
So, now, we're sitting another forty minutes, you know? My guys taking time off work. Kind of stinks that we're sitting there with a road closed.
What I would suggest to you guys, and I don't know if you do this or not, but don't hesitate to let county radio know to, for us to expedite based on whatever circumstance it is. If it's, if it's a, a busy roadway that you think is a priority roadway, I mean, that's how we would handle it, uh, on the turnpike. All right, we prioritize getting this open, so don't hesitate to communicate that to county who will communicate to us, if you're not doing that already.
Right. You just look back to the citizens to see, I might have a big accident there, and the car's going to need towed.
No, I have to...
We got the road closed, six-way five's closed. Depending what time of day it is, that can be a major impact.
Right.
And I feel kind of silly sometimes, waiting till your guy gets there, and then waiting for a tow truck.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a couple more, but I want to give them a chance. Um, one hour agenda later, of course, is the drug task force that we are asked to voluntarily get information. Did you guys work together? Did you see that it's important that we engage the drug test? If that becomes an issue, and is that handled separately than, than what your services are?
The drug task force, we have a county drug task force.
Yeah, that's true.
We have the, our agency has a drug unit, um, that work in communication with each other. And my, my, uh, unit also works in conjunction with both the county drug task force, and we're, we're in communication with those guys. We, for, for certain.
Do they basically have like more undercover officers than you sort of have? Well, why is there, why, why is there two separate?
Good, good question. Um, they have their resources that are full of all the local departments in the county, and we have our troopers that are also operating undercover as well. So, uh, the state police in its whole, across the state, has undercover operatives, as well as the county task force. I mean, the, the more, it doesn't hurt to have both, especially if they're working here. As my experience, yeah. You, you can never, in, in respects to response time, in respects to those different agencies operating kind of in the same facility, there's never enough, there's never enough of both locals and the state police. So, I mean, if you have a unit like that that's, that's stocked up with both us and them, you know, I find it pretty awesome.
One more. The governor has proposed this twenty-five dollar per capita tax in his budget. Have you been following that at all? Is that something...
Sure. As a resident of Caldwell, absolutely.
Is it something that potentially is going to happen, or, um, I mean, the majority of the state uses the state cars. It's the minority that, that has their own, and it seems like they're the ones they're going to blame, and that the rest are getting it for free, but we don't feel we're getting it for free, you know?
They all pay taxes?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I don't really, I can't really speak to where it's going to go. I know that, uh, there's a local representative, uh, in Lancaster City that's proposing it every year for, for the last fifteen or twenty years, and they never materialize. So, if you go on past, past track record, I would say no, but, but I can't really speak to it for a minute.
But if it did, you should double your force and, um...
What do you think? Twenty-five dollars, um, it's, it's almost inconsequential in what that would raise revenue-wise to, for, for an agency such as ours. I mean, it's not, it's just not a practical bill in the state, but, or, I'm sorry, that wasn't a bill, that was a budget, or some, or both budget, um, but, it's, if I told you my opinion, it would be as private citizen Todd McCurry.
Well, I, I will speak on it, and have them do, we appreciate your service. We feel that state police are more professional, and you do, you do a better job. Unfortunately, we don't control the politics either, and determine how many and what happens among the barracks, close the effort, and move to Lancaster. It seem like, you know, we're losing support, losing coverage, but, you know, we have the same problem. Why do I go so far?
Well, I'll tell you, the healthy number of the Ephrae guys came to Lancaster and still remain in Lancaster and come up into these zones as if they still were in Ephrae. And that's, and that's an important aspect, I think. I know myself, you know, I, I covered the same zones as a detective at Lancaster that I did in Ephrae. I know the area, I know who the players are. So, it, we do, the troopers on the road, the guys that affect your community, have changed, and budgets have been flowing, and power heads and flows, but, but we do, our guys do what they can with what we have at, at most, and frankly, if there's an emergency in Breckton Township, you're going to get better service than ninety percent of locals because we have it all. You may not see us every day during the week, but if something major happens, you're going to see fifty troopers up here that other, that, that nobody else can hold against.
Yeah, yeah. You made me think of one thing. We had a man years ago come into the township, saying a lot of speeding and a lot of stronger. These officers, they go, go set somebody up. Who do you think was one of the first people that got the pick? I would say...
That happens.
So...
Yeah, if you're going to call a complaint, make sure you follow the rules.
Well, we, we hear that the word on the street is getting around that we don't have our own local police, and they can drive differently here, but I, not sure I've seen that in evidence, but, you know, it's just something that we fight, that, that perception that people know. But I don't, I, I see you guys doing our shit business, and, but again, that's something we, we occasionally hear.
Well, I would say, based on the report that I'm looking at here...
Those in the group don't know, the state police provides a township with a monthly report. It lists all their incidents, right, type of call, it says...
Correct.
Calls or something.
So, to give you a, a better understanding of this report, there's two types of crashes, a non-reportable crash and a reportable crash. Non-reportable crash will be classified as something that is basically your fender benders. No injuries, no vehicle needs towed. Reportable crash is requires a vehicle to be towed, and somebody's injured, or somebody's injured, not any, it's or. In the, in the timeframe reported here, which is February, there was one reportable crash in Breckton Township. That's pretty, that's very good. So, not to say that people aren't speeding or driving a little bit, but as far as accidents involving injury or major damage to vehicles, I've only seen one on this report since February. That's, that's very good. And I know from driving through this township, there's not a lot of these roads that I feel comfortable speeding on. It winds a little bit up here, so...
So, yeah, we get that. We, we looked through, and I agree with his assessment, there's, there has not been a lot of red flags jumping out. Now, that don't mean that we couldn't have a crime wave start this summer or something that, we'll get, we'll deal with that then.
It comes in waves. If there's, you know, if, if there's a burglary wave when the weather gets warm, you know, a lot of times, it's, it's one group or one person, and it may take us a couple of weeks, sometimes a couple of months to catch up with them, but usually, we find, we find who's responsible for that one, and they are off the streets for a while, they won't help for a little while. As a crime supervisor in Lancaster, I have three detectives dedicated to the northern half of county. These numbers are pretty good. They're very professional.
Last chance, guys. Okay? Thank you for coming out.
Thank you. Nope, no problem. You just email me if you have any issues.
Okay, our next guest is the Willow Street Lot add-on, Ron Hersh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dean? Ron Hersh. Let's grab a, um, basic add-on plan that was before the supervisors had the school board management plan several months ago. Property is located on Willow Street, just before you get into Adamstown Borough. It's at the Borough line here. Power line comes up this right across here on the side. The property originally started out in this configuration, was a landlot parcel that was found on the backside of the hill here, just more of the, of the, uh, power lines. There was a right-of-way that was established here. This property and this property were under the same individual, and the right-of-way was established, however, they neglected to include in that right-of-way for utilities, um, for stormwater, that kind of stuff. So, it had a, kind of rose red flag there. Some issues with the driveway as well, this person would need to sign off the driveway. So, something like that. We had, had approval from township on additional approval on, on the stormwater plan, but now, we're kind of coming back to process the add-on plans. So, the process is, or the, the plan would include kind of extending this property line down along the right-of-way of the, of the power lines down to the front. That would give them this, be simple, we'll be doing that. We'll increase this lot to, um, to an acre and a half in size. So, that's, that's kind of what we're processing here. This is the portion of the plan that isn't related to stormwater necessarily, there's just some improvements going on. But, uh, some grading plan as part of that, which is a driveway coming up through, again, on this property, which should now be simple. So, basically, we're just processing the add-on plan, we're doing, um, about twenty-four, a hundred square feet, a hundred square feet to this property during the back. We would be asking for, um, any questions on, yeah, how, or the, 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 the lot here? They would have about ten plus acres left over. This is a, if you can picture it, kind of goes uphill a little bit, house sits back here, and it's kind of a big crest, a little bit on that side. Yeah, so we're adding about, like I said, twenty-five, twenty-five dollars worth of the overhead acre to lock it back, so it'll be simple. We would be requesting two waivers from, or one waiver, I guess, from, based on the letter, which would be section ninety-five eighteen E two as it relates to necessary road improvements, required road improvements in this along Willow Street, which would, require us to put, make sure twenty-foot cartway with a three-foot shoulder widening. The existing street out there is about twenty-five, twenty-five and a half feet wide. It's recently improved, it's been several years. So, again, we would feel that would, you know, be a little, little burden to someone who will be doing the forest, who will manage one of those sort of...
It's the state.
It's the state. We would be, uh, offering additional right-of-way along there for the, um, I'd be referring to the, uh, Edward's twenty-three yard from that. We did receive comments as well, from some PCF board members today, too, Josh and Big, uh, no major comments there whatsoever. Today, we'd be looking for actual waiver, um, and additional final approval based on February twenty, uh, letter, protect.
And the planning commission did review this at their last meeting. They recommended approval of the waiver and also the additional final plan approval. That's in the letter of March first, here. That's in the letter of March first, here, I think.
Starting discussion on the requests. Okay, is there a motion to approve the partial waiver and the, uh, additional plan approval? Make the motion that we approve the partial waiver for, uh, shoulder widening and conditions for the final plan approval. That's reasonable. Okay, we had a motion, uh, one second. There's a favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, our next guest is here for the Maple Grove Automotive.
Actually, I'm gonna say that's not.
Change your shirts.
Yeah.
No, no. I'm still Ron Hershaw. So, I am quasi-filling in here for, um, planning management Todd Shuff, uh, with all of this from a surveying perspective, um, and, um, I was asked, he's at another township tonight, so I was asked to fill in for him, so I'll be here anyway. Um, so, what we're looking at here is a development plan for, uh, Andrews Way Lot Six, which, as you go back to the end of Andrews Way, there's a T, game exhaust is straight ahead, um, twenty-eleven, I think it was, uh, game has, uh, had subdivided off, um, a lot off to the left-hand side of the north side of where they're at, because this is the lot in question. Um, this, this will be a, uh, automotive service garage, Maple Grove Automotive, um, which is on the road, uh, right outside of Oakland, uh, might be relocated to this location, and, uh, proposing a garage, parking facilities, stormwater as well, uh, sanitary service too, up to. A little better picture of existing land. There was a lot, uh, of, of basin that was put in here as part of game's originally developed plan that we're kind of improving as part of this, I'll get the grading plan here, show you. Okay, what's going on, this is probably the easiest way. So, we're proposing to have an access drive that would come off of the, the hammer, uh, for lack of better terms, there, Andrews Way, come off back to the backside, to the, um, parking area facilities here, and the service garage area here, it would be in the back. There's some parking here in the rear, some swales that wrap around this way, um, rain garden would be expanded, as you can see here, for stormwater. The first picture that I showed you here, here, remaining, kind of a fellow grandeur of, uh, proposed landscaping, existing landscaping is here, and rain garden as well. Um, so that's what we're looking at, at, at doing. We do have comments, Technicon, and there is some items that we, we kind of stress. I gave you the particulars, it's about a fifty-five, a hundred square feet, automotive repair garage, it has twenty-three, uh, proposed parking stalls, three employees, we have a little bit of, I'll see, the operating facility. Um, as part of the plan and through the waiver, or through the review process, there was a few waivers that were requested. Uh, one is an access drive separation distance, as you can see, game exhaust, uh, kind of comes off Andrews Way at this location, we would propose to come off the end of Andrews Way, the hammer there, um, so we've one waiver we're looking for, that's section ninety-eight, um, forty-three K five, or, another one would be, uh, perimeter landscape parking, uh, which would be, or, perimeter parking landscape, uh, ninety-eight, forty-four K four. Um, the, the parking area is actually, as you can see, fairly far away from, from Andrews Way. It's also up, I'll go back to the grading plan as well, it's also, as you can see, it's, it's upgrade, for a substantial from, from where, uh, the driveway is right now, or the, at Andrews Way, um, and the purpose of screening is really to have a, you know, screen on site, just from the right-of-way of the road, um, yeah, it's part of parking lot, obviously, I don't want to have it on site, but, you know, there's something there that's not being seen. You can, you can see it's gonna be elevated higher than what this road would listen, it will not be readily visible for, on this northern side, there's existing trees that are there, you know, provide a buffer from ag land, which would be this side and the, um, the north side of the property. Um, there is some trees, uh, in the rear of the property, to the, to the east here, um, and there will be, as you can see, a rendering, some ag here, some trees that would be inside of the parking here, and then also inside the rain garden.
No, that's, that's a good explanation. I, I think, and all these waivers were reviewed by the planning commission and recommended for approval.
An additional, uh, waiver as relates to stormwater would be minimum slope swale two percent. I would defer kind of to Mike on this, but I think it's the one that runs around the east side into the south.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's just kind of a little bit of challenge to get that water coming out around the backside. I think this is the swale that we're talking about, where it is a little flat spot.
Correct, correct.
And that's in the neighborhood of the building, obviously, um, with the building being here, you know, with the building beyond, where there will look for access all the way around the building, as you can see, these bays will go, go through, allow a little easier traffic through the, through the facilities, um, as we come down here along this side of the building, we want it flat, and there's a little, uh, a little flat there with that too. Um, so, that would be our waivers to request that, that section is right there, that's what we're presenting.
And some of the island wise is that for just relative discussion, has it been graded similarly? Uh, and I don't believe there's been any drainage issue there. It's a little different, it's in a residential subdivision where it's impacting a lot of different people's houses or backyards, uh, so I don't perceive this as being an issue because of where it's located.
It's not a large section either, most of that swale would, yeah, so the drainage area coming into there would, not be sure, not necessarily huge as well. I mean, the swale's only about a foot and a half deep anyway, so it's not, it's not really used to anywhere. So, today we'd be looking for additional plan approval on the plan, if you want any.
I'm sorry, it was February twenty-third, whatever. Yeah, the waivers are listed for you, and I did a letter of March first, uh, in your package, so those list all the waiver requests that were recommended for approval and then the additional. This is, one of the waivers is to go right to final plan, so that would be, uh, part of your, uh, consideration tonight, would be additional final plan approval.
Yeah. And the other thing we're looking for yet, the township will be looking for most, would be, uh, the letter of credit, um, to secure that, we need approval on the sewer, um, from the authority, um, and the, and that's, we have been in touch with Jason, there's, uh, right, well, so it's, we're not, it's not always just cross off the two lists, and it'll also be from a solicitor, uh, the, uh, official on that.
Right, we've had some discussions with a solicitor, and, uh, that's gonna be in process, uh, we're managing shortly.
So, we have the eight recommendations based upon your March first letter. We have her, uh, to accept the financial security of one thousand four, one hundred and four thousand.
Yep.
One thousand.
One thousand.
We're looking for, we're sorry, we're looking down, right?
And then also, you're looking for additional plan, additional to final plan.
That's right.
Three things. Okay. I'll make a motion that we grant the waivers as requested and recommend by the planning commission on March first, the letter, there's eight of them.
I'll say aye.
Do you have a motion to grant the waivers based upon the March first letter, and what's second, there's a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. With that butchered up, the, uh, push up the amount, I'll let someone else, uh, pull that off.
One thousand and forty dollars.
Make a motion that we approve the financial security in the amount of one hundred and four thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-three cents.
Okay, we had a motion to accept the financial security, and what's second, there's a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And he has a request to take additional plan to final, final plan. Right. Okay, a motion for that.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion that we take it for the final plan approval.
Okay, motion was made in the second, there's a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll look at that. Thanks, Ron. Okay, we worked through our guests for tonight. Our next item is a public hearing, so we'll, we'll, it'll be open for you to offer comments or suggestions concerning the rezoning of a tract of land along Bone Hill Road, and I ask our solicitor to, to, um, to describe legal jargon of that.
Okay, terrific. Uh, the planning commission recommended that eleven tracts of land be rezoned from the residential low, our Elzoni district, to the residential medium zoning district, and we advertised this ordinance two thousand fifteen to two thousand eighteen, which is in front of the board tonight for enactment, but before they can enact this, they have to open it up for a public hearing, which the chairman has done so, and if there's any individuals in the public that would like to provide any comment or ask any questions, this is the time for you to do so, but there is an ordinance on the table to change these eleven areas, uh, these tracts from residential low to residential medium.
Thank you. Okay, um, I think the board looked at this, this, and originally as a, as a correction, um, the use that was there, um, mobile home park and small parcels were all basically done conforming to residential low, which is what it was zoned, uh, but, but correcting the zoning to residential medium, we basically brought them all into compliance, uh, a mobile home is a permitted use, a conditional permitted use in residential medium, it is not a permitted use in residential low, so we had uses that were not permitted in the zoning, which it currently was, um, so, in summary, it was basically a correction to zone it for what it was being used for, so, this time, if anyone has any, wants to make any comments or speaking in support or opposition, we'll give you as much time as you need, there's no limit on this. Any questions? They have gone to the planning commission, they recommend rezoning, uh, the board then forwards to the county, the planning commission, they recommended rezoning, and then, um, as we were required to have a public meeting here before we could take any action on their recommendations. Okay, is there any board discussion? The mobile, uh, park will have to do it, uh, through the zoning here, maybe. It's an existing use, if they, if they change it, it's, it's permitted, uh, conditional use, if they change it, there'll still be some, you'll have to back to this board, the city, let's say they, you know, change it to apartments or something like that, uh, then, then we require conditional approval, which would come back to this board, but that is an avenue that's available in the residential medium, this is not, is not permitted in the residential low. So, just because it's zoned residential medium, there are some conditional uses that need supervisor approval, that they would still have to get board approval to do, doesn't mean that it automatically turned into townhouse and apartments overnight. But the lot sizes and the fact, the lot sizes, I think, is, uh, the minimum lot size in residential low is twenty thousand square feet, most of these were small, were smaller than twenty thousand, so they were all non-conforming lots, they were, they were not, they're not conforming to what the zoning was. Um, basically, it brings them all into the correct zoning for what they use as currently. And this zoning is the same as across the turnpike in the corner of, not just Tom Road and six twenty-five, that's residential medium, and those townhouses were not permitted as right, they were permitted as a conditional approval, they first had to have approval from this board to put the townhouses there, but townhouses are not permitted at all in residential low. Any comments, Tom? And does that ordinance have a number?
Yes, it's ordinance number, or, two thousand fifteen, two fifteen. Now, I'm watching.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance, uh, ordinance number two thousand fifteen, of two thou, of the year.
Two fifteen, yeah, I'm sorry.
Ordinance number two fifteen of two thousand eighteen, amending the zoning ordinance referenced in chapter one ten, section one ten fifteen of the code ordinances, by changing the zoning classification of eleven tracts of land from residential low to residential medium. And that's the motion. I'll say aye. Okay, motion was made in the second, there's a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we have our minutes from last month before you.
Yeah.
Do you read? Is there a motion to accept them?
Make the motion to accept the minutes of February the thirteenth, right now township meeting, as presented.
Second. Okay, motion was made to accept them, and what's second, there's a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, you have the bills?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills for the month in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty cents.
I second it. Okay, motion was made to pay the bills, and what's second, there's a favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, move on to our reports, we have the township engineer's report.
Yes, I have, uh, four items for you this evening in my report of March tonight, um, items five and six, just for reference, uh, page four, have already been addressed, um, I'll read those for you this evening. Uh, item number one is the Wilmer Lead Stormwater Management, uh, Stormwater Management Agreement for your actions tonight, there's some good stormwater management, uh, it's also a stormwater management agreement for approval this evening. Item three is the Marla Hoover Stormwater Management Memorandum of Understanding, and item four, and there's a slight amendment to this that is not noted in my report, uh, is received the Memorandum of Understanding, a waiver request for the minimum slope of the swale, uh, on the property in a letter dated March first, a financial security recommendation in the amount of twenty-one thousand, twelve dollars and fifty-nine cents, and also approval of the stormwater management agreement for that property.
Okay, are there any questions that you want to break them out individually? We can make, make a motion to approve all four. Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve all the items requiring action on the recommendations from our township engineer.
I'll say aye.
Motion was made in the second, there's a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, you have your road master's report. Okay, you have your roadmaster's report. Anything you want to add?
Pretty much, I couldn't even think of the report that I wanted to. I think, yous have any questions for me or concerns? I did, I did get to talk, the 92 International had broken down on us in last storm. I lost the brakes on it. And I took it to the mechanic and I told him, before he fixes anything, to go over what it needs for inspection. And it needs a substantial amount of work for him to inspect it. We'd have to sink, I'm going to guess it's probably going to be a $20,000 bill or more into the truck in order to get it to pass inspection. The frame has split too far now. He won't pass that. The cab, the cab mounts are rusted out, brake lines are rusted out, rotors are rusted out, the bed's rusted out. It's just, it's, he's told me it's just, it's time that the truck move on. It's, so.
And you said this was 92?
92 International, yeah.
Are all them inspected the same time of year?
Uh, not exactly. Some of them are up now. They used to be on a six-month period, all of our trucks, except for the pickups. They just recently changed that, the laws. Now it's every year. And I believe most of them are in June. Some are around November, October-ish. Some are right now in March. So they're, they're not all the same month, but they are, they are split up a little bit.
You didn't tell them to go ahead with anything?
No, no, I was waiting. No, I didn't tell them to go ahead with anything. I, I, if I bought, I would, there's no way I would sink $2 into that truck anymore. It's just not worth it anymore. It's, it's served the township well, but it's, I believe it's time that it moves on. It's a safety hazard anymore. I mean, I couldn't even, when I brought it back, I tried to limp it back without any brakes. Couldn't even stop coming down 897 here. I had to park down in the Brubaker Park.
Right, I know, I know you, you have some issues with the trucks getting old. The average age, being 19 years old. And I applaud you for the work you provided in pricing out some new trucks. I don't think I'm prepared to make any decisions on that tonight. It's going to take a little bit of time. I may ask Carol for some additional financial information. Where we're currently at, we still have this hangover of our heads on the $25 per person tax for state police, which could amount to almost $200,000. So have a little bit of patience to work through this thing. But as far as on your report, you mentioned the work you did. You've asked us about getting the, what do you call it, the spot skin patching truck out.
Yeah, yeah. You would use that question, we can about that last meeting. And I called the company that does it. The only company I'm aware of that does do it. And like I said, they would come out, they would do roughly 10,000 square yards of skin patching with RC-250. And if we would want to have them come in and do that, I mean, it would be a good benefit. It's 10,000 square yards, that's more than we can get done in a year or two years' times. I mean, that would be a substantial amount of skin patching with the, with the good oil. So I had gotten, priced out an estimate there for yous and stuff.
With your loan of work spending, have the rise in, it's up $16,200 for doing some of the skin patching for the truck that has the stone and oil on one, and just put it right down.
Did you have in mind what roads you were going to do?
Uh, I, I, to be honest with you, I did not yet. I had, I had thought of a few. Crane Mill, there's a few spots that could use it. Muddy Creek, South Muddy Creek, there's a few spots. Those are the only roads that I had. I hadn't really gone around and really thought about where I was going to take the truck yet.
So this would be, this wouldn't be in replacement of the tar chip, it would be as an addition?
It'd be addition, yeah.
You don't have to do whole roads?
No, no. They do, basically, they would come in and the truck goes, I think, from one or two foot wide up to 10 foot wide. And they, I, I didn't get to see the operation. Levi was able to see the demo, but it's, it's pretty slick how they do it. And talking to other roadmasters, they, they're bringing that truck in now because the truck gets more done in one day's time than the road crew gets done in a, in a year or two.
There's probably some, you'll still have some spots where you'll probably have to do it manually.
Absolutely, absolutely. There's no question about that.
So I'll tell the board the honest truth. I like the idea of using the RC-250 oil. It's decent material, you know? But I like the idea to black top.
What's happening to Boulder Hill Road? Do you see that leak? That's hollowed off or it's just coming off?
That's something I had to talk to the contractor that put that down last year to see if they would come out and warrant some of that work. I, I'm not exactly sure what's going on there. Why?
It was put on pretty late, too.
It was put on late. It was supposed to be done by the end of August and they didn't get in till, was it end of September or something like that? And I know when they did Boulder Hill, they had waited out. They, we had a spurt rain shower and they waited for a while for the road to dry. I don't know if that has something to do with it or, or what the deal is. But I, I did see that, especially in front of Jerry's house, I saw it was really starting to, like, peel up.
Right on the corner in Oakland there, it's smoothly gone, too.
And, I know, I gotta, I gotta look at it closer. I don't know if the stones just are gone or if the oil and everything peeled up or what.
I know where the stones are. In my yard. Well, I, I think, I would make a motion that we authorize you to pursue this truck, figure out which roads you can use it. I'd rather get, you know, a full day out of it or something. And we would authorize you to spend, spend this on, on the RC-250 and spot patching.
Yeah, I'd have to, he's got to get it done, and he, he's aware of this, but we can't use RC-250 after the end of April, so.
So I make a motion that we approve the process. The, you can go ahead and continue.
One second.
Okay, the motion was made in the second. Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Meantime, with the Green International, I mean, you just want me to let that sit? You don't want me to authorize the mechanic to go ahead and sink all that money into?
No.
Just let it sit for now?
Yeah. Spend some time trying to figure out what maybe the best thing to do with the township. Okay?
How's the yellow Ford?
Yellow Ford, it's not far behind the Green International. The cab shield rusted off. We had to bolt that on. The windshield wipers are not the greatest shape. It's got oil leaks. The bed doesn't have holes in it yet, but it's getting very close. It's not far behind Green International.
When I came on the trucks we had before, even Steve Paul for David, anybody who's here, we had signs folded all over the beds of our dump trucks. We even had a sign for the door in the back.
The whole chute, yeah.
That truck there, the reason we got it was because the township that had it, they didn't match the color of their other trucks. We only paid, I think, $7,000 for that truck, completely the way it is. And I figure it's been five years, you know?
I think it's been five years.
Yeah, I think it's been longer.
I think because 92, I was thinking was 2011 or something like that is when we first had service records on it.
It never was purchased to replace anything. It was, those two were purchased to cut the route short.
Nice.
So the drivers didn't have to spend as much time. Because it was not going to spend as regular storm bank, 12, 15 hours out there, where putting the extra truck, picking up usings, that cut it back to where in a storm bank. Maybe you're getting down to six to eight, you know? Depends how your long duration of the storm is, but it cut back in the old time. It was a good thing. The green one, when we bought that, was 15 or 16,000. Now we have longer. So. But the board will have to decide.
Yeah.
What direction.
When will you get your bids back? When the?
Well, I think they're supposed to be approved, they advertise them. Well, the bits for the cog are, they're in the process. We'll have them by next meeting to pick the prices. And I believe we'll approve.
On that later tonight?
Later tonight for the rest of the work. So that would be. April meeting, we have everything, what it's going to end up costing.
We'll put the, the truck issue on next month's agenda again.
Didn't you just want additional information?
No, I'm, I'm, I'd like to see what the numbers come in on the road work. Carol's got some information. We basically don't have 200,000, 300,000 sitting around.
Right.
We're not prepared for it. And so we're going to have to work through this.
One thing I will say is, as I looked at the police report, and we get it, and you heard the police officer say, there was only one report of a accident, they were, that's telling me the road crew's doing their job. You know, if you don't do your job, there's going to be cars smashing everywhere. So people call the late hours, no. But you should be doing your job and not getting phone calls. If I don't get phone calls, don't get phone calls, I'm happy.
That's good.
I didn't get any, so.
Anything for roadmaster? Okay, the, we have the SEO report. Zoning, Levi's office, Marla. Anything for the solicitor?
Yes. All right, so you tell.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to approve the reports?
We make a motion that we approve the roadmaster engineer SEO zoning reports as presented.
One second. Okay, the motion was made in the second. Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, we have, we have proposed tax amendment under old business, but I think. Is this the idea that?
Yeah.
Well, they, they had a last meeting, they should have sent out a, to get, the lines been wrapped in metal.
It's just in the report. It's under the parking rec, report, it's right in front of the old business. Second page of the report. Under new business, they're asking for permission to have AB Martin moving to connect to it.
No, we're going to do it. Gary's just going to get the metal, have it bended, basically, we just have to.
Gotcha.
Screw it, I guess.
They're asking for $1,624.58 to do that. That's anything in their report, and then obviously the additional information.
Yeah.
Is that just like coiled aluminum?
I think so. Yeah, it's basically, from what I understood, Gary's got a, was that?
Coiled aluminum?
No, probably metal.
I think it's, I thought it was tin or whatever. I don't, Gary got the essence. I didn't see anything.
It says metal to wrap.
Yeah.
I didn't see any of the.
He wants to make it like the Beaver Lodge, where that's all wrapped, and then he'd like to put a white ceiling in it to help it brighten the actual pavilion up.
Well, the metal, no, Martin's will bend, custom bend it to whatever you want. And the metal, it'll be stronger than the, and.
It's just a staple.
Yeah, yeah. I recommend it's in metal because they do a 27 gauge or 26 gauge metal. It's power coated, lasts just as long. You don't see as much aluminum anymore because it expands if it transfers in metal. Fence over there, so. That's your recommendation. I, I haven't seen this ceiling, but is there nothing there now?
There's nothing there now. Well, no, I think it's plywood.
Oh.
It's plywood and it's stained, it's stained dark and it's just, in general, it's just, it's, it's dark underneath there. He wants to wrap everything in metal. It's, I mean, I think it's a good idea. It'll be, you know, we won't have to maintain it as much anymore. Every now, now, they, every couple of years, we try and stain it and stuff.
I like the idea. Right. Is there a motion to accept their recommendation?
I make the motion that we get the metal for AB Martin moving, but wrapped around in the motion ceiling. It costed $1,624.58.
One second. Okay, the motion was made to accept their recommendation. As was second, does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, another thing we have from the park and rec, I guess you've got prices on them.
Yeah, there's no decision that needs to be made on that. I just wanted to give, use the information. That way you kind of know what's going on, just in case if a decision's not made the next meeting.
Yeah.
I've been pushing for this since last October.
So number five is the, the 20,600 was the last estimate that you're giving them. That's, am I correct on that one? Just for the fence only?
Right.
Okay, that's the last one that, all this other stuff Andy had given them previous in several months.
Yeah.
This last option is, because they didn't like any of these other options, was to just get the fence in only. So he's taking that back to them next week. In hopes that they make a decision on moving forward or something.
Right, what their thought process was, they'd like to just do the fence and then if we get, basically, it's like, they either want to do plywood and you bolt it to the fence around the outs, or around the inside, or do like a plastic type of like plywood sheet. I guess they put it in barns and stuff. I, I've never actually seen this stuff. I did find it online, got some pricing for that. So I'm going to present them with the pricing for plywood and this plastic sheeting this next meeting, with the updated fence costs and everything, and see what, where they want to go.
That was bringing us next to us.
Okay, okay. Have they been talked into somebody who runs that league?
I talked with them. Nobody there has talked with them. And, you know, I, I asked them, you know, I said, what would you prefer to see, you know? And they said, well, we prefer to. And, you know, I asked them, you know, I said, what would you prefer to see, you know, and they said, well, we prefer to see the hockey boards. But they're, you know, to do the professional, it's expensive. It's sixty, what, sixty thousand dollars or whatever to do that. Um, and I, you know, expressed that to the park board and they just, their thoughts were, well. I said, to spend that much and for what they get out of the court, they don't feel that it's not, they'll never pay it off. Well, it's not the point of having a park, it's to provide services for the public, not to make money. But.
How many leagues?
It's two, but they combined in one. They do it together now, and they do it twice a year. And it's very large groups, it's very busy.
I mean, I think it would increase, if we would do whatever we do, I think it's gonna increase the, the use of it. Um, I know, I was told that there was even hesitation this last time when they went to.
That was last week.
Yeah.
Well, the question, if it costs a lot more than what they want, are they willing to pay a higher rental fee?
I don't know that. I think that they're just looking for something. Obviously, they want the best. I mean, they want, you know, the best.
You're wrong.
They're looking, and I did tell them that it probably won't be that big top dollar. But I said, I, you know, that we're looking to do some type of improvement and hope that, you know, they can move forward with something. And they decided that they will use it again, but there wasn't hesitation as to whether or not they were gonna try and find a different location.
If we provide material, would they install?
They had expressed that they would help previously. I did not ask that when I talked to them. Um. Yeah, so I don't know, but it's, putting up a chain link fence, I've, I've never done it. I'm sure it's not that hard, but it's, uh, you know. It's for, I mean, you mean as far as doing the fence itself, or as doing?
I was thinking more of the board, but.
Fence too. Uh, well, the fence, yeah, I don't.
I mean, I, I, I agree with you, it's a part. We don't, we absorb the costs, we provide for them, but the same token is that they're wanting to go a little beyond. Are they willing to maybe contribute labor or something?
They would. They expressed that they would help if we would ask, I'm sure they would come in and help us. So.
Yeah. There would be no liability issue if they were helping to.
We would have them sign a lease, a bond, at least. And it's just like a waiver form. Just wanted to age each other and establish where people law through.
Discuss that with the parking rec. I mean, that's, don't, I mean, use it as an option or something.
Yeah, that was the sub last meeting, yeah.
Okay, that concludes the parking rec.
Did these, I was gonna present that to them, the stream restoration.
Well, that's in the back of the.
In the very back of the packet, along Black Creek. I was met with the conservation district back there. And the stream's really eroding down there, and I emphasized to them that they do have a fishing rodeo down there, and I don't want to ruin that. And he drew up a little thing. Um, said, I think it'll be a great improvement, and he said it won't destroy the fishing rodeo. He said, actually, it'll help because the fish will like it there and they'll stay. Uh, but it could take up to two years of planning, and if we get the right grants and we, and conservation district works with us, it'd probably be at little to no cost to us. So, I was gonna present that to the board, park board this meeting, uh, to make sure they're okay, but we're going through with this, but I thought, I'll get your approval while, that way we can keep moving forward with it.
Seems like a practical thing to do.
Yeah.
Conservation district is great with helping out with that kind of stuff.
Now, even the fishing game is gonna help out with the two, so.
Not qualified for any, you know, what.
Actually, it's outside of the area.
Outside the area.
Yeah. Unfortunately.
And if you include it, then you gotta overcompensate the other areas, so you're actually not getting any credit.
Strike that.
Yeah.
Yeah, proceed, present it, see if you can get them on board.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we expecting to take any action on this proposed tax amendment?
I think, Jerry, this was just, if Carol can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this was just, it was discussed at the planning commission, obviously. You were looking for a recommendation on the proposed height on the accessory structure, which they recommended twenty feet. And at that point, I think what the direction was, was to forward it to the board, if you were satisfied that this could be drafted in the form of an ordinance, you could direct the solicitor to move forward in that regard for consideration of that tax amendment.
Would that need to go to the planning commission for review?
Yes.
Both.
If.
Yep. For all due, yep.
Okay.
Cause it has to go to them in an ordinance form in which the solicitor would need to draft.
You got it, yeah.
Well, I think it pretty much, the recommendation of the zoning officer was to increase the twenty foot. And again, this was just, this is just limited to Ag One, Ag Two, and Forest Rec.
Correct.
And the planning commission has to suggest twenty-eight feet. So the question tonight is, are we comfortable with twenty-eight? And we want the, our solicitor to proceed. Again, I emphasize it's just Ag One, Ag Two, and Forest Rec. It's not talking about twenty-eight foot high building, accessory building in the Ag districts, I mean, in the residential districts. This could be right next to a barn, right next to an ag building, which has no height restrictions. And it still would be less than maximum height of the residential building, which is thirty-five feet. So unless you think the twenty-eight is a number that's too high, you'll see something different.
Well, that's what we have the planning commission for, to discuss and review this things, and I'm sure they're. Depends what you're putting in this building. You could use twenty-eight feet, you know. I imagine you could use it for.
Well, this is peak height we're talking.
Right, yeah.
That's if you put a deeper pitch on, you're not.
Right.
So you're going to ten foot ceiling in some buildings.
This would allow you, let's say somebody had horses, and they're able to go over or something, you know.
But then it'd be an ag building, so then it would be, you know, that.
It would be an ag building?
Yes.
Possible, yeah. Yeah, these are more or less for derages. I think that the issue was parking of RVs and larger type of vehicles.
Type through the doors.
The end of doors associated with that, yeah.
Last month, the zoning hearing board heard a hearing for twenty-seven foot, so it's like, it seems like that. They heard for twenty-four feet, twenty-five, twenty-seven. Um, I think this twenty-eight's gonna cover practically everything they, they had to date.
Will you make a motion?
Yeah, let's, let's have a motion for our solicitor to clear an ordinance and.
I make a motion that solicitor, the order, the ordinance, it has to go back to the planning commission.
You have to change.
To be presented back to the planning commission to change the height of the building.
Accessory building.
Accessory buildings to twenty-eight feet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Does the, does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, we're moving on to new things. And we have a letter, um, who's familiar with this?
Well, it kind of came, they thought they had this in place. The contractor contacted myself to have, um, Andy, look at the detour on this particular, I see the detour did not copy in your packets, I apologize. Um, to close the Black Creek Road.
Center Church Road.
Yeah, they call it Black Creek Road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I saw that, and I was like, it's the Center Church.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, but they caught, they wanted Andy to, because it's gonna be a short section of our township road.
Yeah, I guess the detour, I didn't even get a chance to look at it, but I, I went on the state website and looked at their ADT for lead and Center Church Road. It's like two hundred and fifty cars a day. I mean, I really don't have any quarrels with them at all. Uh, detour and traffic on our township road for, for Center Church.
So they're replacing the bridge on Center Church Road.
Right.
Which is between East Earl and.
Right now, that's a long, far line.
Yeah.
Hour. That's state roads.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yeah. And I had Liz take a look at the agreement. She asked to have two things changed, which they did, and they forwarded back, and she reviewed it again quickly, and it's all good.
And what do you need from us?
Just to accept the, the agreement correctly.
Such fact, yeah. Motion to approve, and I, Jeremy, sign off.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the detour route, I guess?
I make a motion that we approve the detour route as presented.
On second. Okay, the motion was made in the second. Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Coming.
Yeah.
I remember several years back, when they cleaned a couple pitches, and they, uh, put a little oil and chip on it. You remember when they went in township, they drove over then, tell?
Yes.
And I said, no. You know who would be paying for this? No. We broke.
I should add that they will be videotaping the road before and after. And they did ask that the Roadmaster accompany them when they do the videotaping of the road conditions.
Black Creek Road is of the, uh, township.
Yeah.
Sure, it would be a bad one, so.
That would be bad news.
So we have two detours, two bridges this summer. This one and Pamaraan Drive.
Which is closed already.
Oh, it's closed already.
And I think this one probably happens this year sometime too.
It may, yes. Yeah, Tori's shaking her head.
First step, stay home with mom.
Okay, our next item is the Five Point Gold Fire Company's asking for a waiver on stormwater or the parking lot.
Yes, this is a, if you recall, Jerry, we had been dealing with the fire company on expansion of the parking lot. Uh, and we prepared a stormwater management plan on their behalf, and we've identified five areas of the stormwater ordinance that we need relief in order to implement the plan that we've come up with for that project. Those items are listed in an email for you this evening. None of these issues we have any injection to from an engineering standpoint. They're literally just relief from the literal interpretation of the ordinance. One has to do with the cover condition for the stormwater stone bed that's being used in that design. One of the items is the using cover conditions, the actual cover conditions in Luuk Meadow. Uh, because the area has been driven upon in the past and is, is more of a compact nature than actual metal condition we need. Item three would be the de-watering time, separation limiting zone. The filtration tests were not completed. However, generally, the area is, is high limiting zone in nature, so they would need relief in that section of the ordinance. We are accounting for that in the design of the basin. Item four would be ENS approval from the conservation district. We are planning on proposing an ENS plan for the fire company. And we will be monitoring that by the township engineer's office for compliance with ENS. And the final item would be having the fire company post financial security for the improvements associated with that project. Normally, a financial security would be provided from the NASTRO until the inspections will be done. We will be inspecting the installation of the facility, so it is covered from the inspection standpoint by the township.
So the project is, they're expanding an area approximately one hundred feet square.
Correct, yes. And that distance is less than one acre, so we wouldn't get in any NDS requirements with these.
Any questions from my team?
How much is the financial security?
We'd be incalculated, Mark. Normally, it would be in the neighborhood of twenty to thirty thousand dollars. I'm just throwing that out generally because it's similar to the design that was done earlier this evening, just we brought.
Is it something that we should do, make the fire company put that up?
Uh, personally, if you have an inspection component, then making sure that that's being installed properly, you do have safeguards in place. Obviously, the NASTRO does provide a very conservative approach by providing above and beyond method. Usually, the financial security covers in the event the developer defaults and walks away from the project, which, obviously, I don't believe the fire companies will ever walk away. So it's a little different from that aspect versus a contractor who may walk away from a development project.
I don't think we need to make a post security.
Well, I don't expect our firemen to start the project.
What are you saying?
I don't, I don't know if we should make a motion.
Well, that's what they're asking.
Yeah, that's the way, yeah. That's why they're asking for the way, yeah. That's why I included it in the list, yeah.
Yeah, I thought you meant.
I didn't think you would. Oh, it was just, I didn't want to speak for the board, but we're not advocating to, we're not doing that. Yeah, that's okay. Same with ENS approval. It just gives a little bit more flexibility, the option to cover that if there is an issue with that deal.
Any questions? I'll make a motion that we approve the, did you say five? I said four.
There were, there were four listed, but I added the ENS.
Okay, okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the five waiver requests as you have listed here.
That's it.
Okay, the motion was made. Grant them the waivers as requested. As was second, does the favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Jerry, in front of that, you missed the resolution for the. That's who missed, right there.
Oh. Okay, we have resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero six, price adjustment on duty material for small quantities.
This is a similar resolution that we adopt every year as part of the road projects. Again, it covers fluctuations in the cost of the payment. The zero, so that is something that is generally passed. I think we've been doing it now for as long as I remember. But you need a resolution every year to cover that.
Is there a limit to the escalator clause, maybe how far?
Ten percent. Usually, if it goes beyond ten percent fluctuation from when the bid was actually awarded to the actual client, they put it down. Uh, if you have a warranty then, uh, if there's a way to get out of the contract and negotiate at that point. So usually, that's, that's what the escalators being adopted for to cover that and beyond in that assignment.
Should it say ten percent?
I think it, actually, it references, it needs a code, that's part of NDOT's criteria that reflects that in the resolution.
Okay, we have motion to adopt resolution for price adjustments. Is that a motion? No, I, I don't, I asked the-
Oh, sure.
Yeah, the resolution number two thousand eighteen dash six. Good question, gentlemen. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, the motion was made, second, does it favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
We also, uh, Jerry, request, uh, I have the bid package prepared for the, uh, for the road projects that aren't covered under the cog, uh, so I would just ask tonight for a motion to advertise that for bid opening on April tenth, for your April fourth meeting. And that advertisement has been prepared for, with Carol.
Any questions on that?
As for the, uh, Black Creek Top Coat and-
Good pull down confirmation, we need, uh, if we're not, yeah.
Okay, you need the motion to go ahead and advertise for the bidding of those projects.
I made a motion to advertise the bid then, for those projects.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Motion was made in the second, does it favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we have one thing left. Okay, Lancaster County Drug Enforcement Task Force, they have requested that the township voluntarily contribute a dollar per capita. So our, our recommended contribution is seven thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars. Um, it is voluntary, we, our township has typically given that in the past, and I wanted to just have it available to discuss here tonight. I, I initially had some concerns, but I know Pen Harvey Township had an issue with a drug house, and they reported it to the Drug Enforcement Task Force, and they came and cleaned it out, and took care of it. So I know we have potential drug things going on in our township, and I changed my mind. I guess I am willing to recommend that we continue to support, support the Lancaster County Drug Task Force and contribute our portion of the seven thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars. As you know, I asked the representative from the state police if it's a conflict of things, and it says they probably work well together, so if it becomes an issue, um, probably a small part, we can do to try to keep our community safe. What do you guys think?
I'll say this, years ago, there was, at least a year or two, we did, did the money. And then I get to see on television how many bad guys we get, how much drugs they haul in, how many guns and you know what. At the time, all of them is taking guns, that is, the task force, it just makes me happy. We have to support it because we could be saving some people's lives in our community, we could, we could, uh, be saving ourselves from a lot of headaches, because a lot of time you're drunk, you got other crimes that follow, so I am full support of giving them to the Lancaster County Drug Task Force.
Your thoughts?
Heard stories of them in Pen Harbor, too, it's like, it's a good, good thing to support. Sounds like they already stepped up to the plate when you had issues going in Pen Harbor, so. I don't know, we didn't know, it's a nice story, but from talking to a few people, it sounded like they already came through for them.
There, there is a few townships that, that don't do it, because they feel that it's almost like an unfunded mandate. The county puts this thing together, and instead of the counties supporting and funding their own program, they make us take our tax powers and fund it, and I know one of the townships in the southern part of the county says that the county needs money for their task force, the county should raise their own tax and, and take care of it, which they can do. But I agree with our, on their date, I, if we need it, they'll be there for us, and again, because we don't have local police, I think it's something we should do, so I'll make a motion that we, um, contribute the seven thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars to the Lancaster County Drug Enforcement Task Force on behalf of our township's residents.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Who that boy did it? Who, who did that boy do?
I have a second.
Okay, the motion was made in the second, does it favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, that's all we have on our agenda tonight.